Yeah, and I just want to preface this with, this is one of our regular reports. I went back and looked at a couple of them just to have some history lessons and see the progression of the work that our district has done. And we have special guests here with us, and so we get to meet some of our staff, which is great. Thank you for being here. I know you've already had a long day. But who doesn't want to end their day with a board meeting, right? There's nothing better. So, thank you for being here, and I will turn it over to Patty Lake Torbert, who oversees this area.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here today, and I am happy to be here today. Like Dr. Sam says, my name is Patty Lake Torbert. I have a few different hats. I am coordinator of Student Support Services, which covers counselors and social workers. And my other portion of my job is coordinator of Office of Indian Education, and so why I'm here today. I am going to try to stick to script, because for those that know me, it's easy for me to go off on a tangent, so we're trying hard to do this. The Sioux Falls School District Office of Indian Education's mission is to empower students by connecting them to their schools, their histories, and their culture. Our goal is that each of one of our students find success, and we do that through their curriculum, which we believe grounded in reliable resources that are both respectful and relevant is so very, very important. The Office of Indian Education provides cultural and language-infused classes to help students succeed academically while learning about their cultural identity. At the elementary level, Native American facilitators work to integrate the Chautauqua wing essential understandings into the regular classroom curriculum. The Native American Connection classes and the Lakota classes at the high school and middle school levels implement programming and culture and language through direct instruction. Instructors at both levels perform case management duties to provide supplies, transportation, enrollment, and help mentoring. I could go on and on. But a lot of different services with the assistance of social workers and our liaisons. The Office of Indian Education oversees the Sioux Falls School District's Title VI and Johnson-O'Malley programs, which we'll talk a little bit more about later here. These Indian education programs, though, are federally funded. They're designed to meet the educational and culturally related needs of our Native American students. They are coordinated through a parent advisory committee composed of parents and guardians of our Native American students. This program gives advice to the project supervisor, so to me, and to the school district by giving direction and implementation of the Indian education program. A little bit later on, we'll talk to Shar Green, and Shar is actually president of our Parent Education Committee this year. So, the overview of what we'll do today is I'll go through enrollment, staff, budget, and talking about present and future programming. I'm not quite sure how the work sessions, you know, if you want to ask questions anytime, please do, but I'll just keep going on. So first, we're going to look at the numbers, and I went back to 2019, 20, last year, so that we had that, you could see that full range of one year and what it looked like. And you'll notice up here that we have two different numbers. The first one, the 1,017 Native American students, that's based on parent guardian's choice at the time of enrollment, when they hit that tab under race and they say Native American student. You'll see a vastly different number with 1,622 Native American students, and this is based on our Title VI, 506 Indian Student Eligibility Certification forms that we ask our families to complete so that we can use those towards the Indian Education Grant. When you take a look at the numbers, now going through history here, this is where you're going to see why we have a change, or why there is such a difference between those two numbers, especially as of the last 10 years. Starting in 2001, we went back, and you can see elementary, middle, and high school averages, I'm sorry, the percentage of the student body. If you average that out, that would be about 4.8% back in 2000, 2001, of our student body that was Native American students. It gradually increased until about that year, 2009, 2010, right in there, where we had more of an average of 5.8%. And then you see the decrease, and I know that some of you already know this, but the reason behind that is, is that that was the year that parents then were able to say that their students were of two races or more. And so now all of a sudden, we have Native American students that are one race, being reported as one race, and for the year 2019, 20, that was 1,017 students. But when we asked parents to please fill out the forms, the federal forms, and we keep this updated, not just weekly, but then we try to track it by a month at a time, is what the grant asks us to do. That at our largest numbers, it would have been the 1622, and I believe that was in January of that year, that school year. So, right now, if you, if we were to take a look at and see what is the percentage in our student body, I believe it says 4.1%. Or when it only one race is checked. So now we go on to staffing in the Office of Indian Education. We have 22 Native American connection facilitators at the elementary level. They are paid for. They're working under the point system, so these are teachers that pass, and counselors too, that pass their school day, are adding in more time, and trying to help out the staff in their buildings. Their focus has changed dramatically over the last few years. They began creating lessons, this was back in 2011, for teachers, and based it on, off of research that would present materials in a respectful way, now has moved to more so creating tools for teachers to use, such as for Native American Day and Lakota language videos. Helping the curriculum committee in adopting and integrating Chautauqua wing history has also been an important part of their focus. At this time, I would like to introduce Anna Brokenlake. Anna, I know some of you know her. Anna is a teacher over at Hawthorne Elementary, and I'd asked Anna if she wouldn't mind coming and talking and telling you a little bit about what they do at Hawthorne, what she does. Anna is so integral in our, in our Office of Indian Education. She does some trainings for us. She is the one that loops all the NAC coordinators into all the information that they need. And believe me, some of them get a little nervous, like, okay, am I doing this right? And Anna's always there to say, of course you're doing it right. But here, let me tell you. So Anna, I don't know who you're calling.
So I am Anna Brokenlake, and I am an elementary facilitator at Hawthorne Elementary. And we do a whole variety of things within our building. I provide staff with historical and cultural training, and we've done that for a number of years. I also help review resources, books, things like that, that teachers want to use in their classroom, or if they have concerns about a particular item that they've noticed that has popped up in curriculum, anything else, I can help them review that as well. I use a remind system this year, and I've used various platforms in the past to help communicate with families in our building, helping give them notifications about different resources or events through the Office of Indian Ed. We, I do help talk with staff about individual students as needed. And then, last year, we started working on a Native American club for some of our students after school, where we did a variety of activities with students. I partnered with our art teacher at the time, Lisa Brunick, and we did some Lakota language, we did a Chautauqua wing history, and then we were culminated on various other cultural activities, and we kind of culminated our year with helping our fourth and fifth grade students create ribbon skirts and ribbon shirts for our international festival. This year, things have looked a little bit different, obviously, for everybody. And so we've been trying to find some different ways to reach out to families and connect with families in the safest way as possible. Our Native American communities are heavily impacted by COVID, so we want to make sure we're helping do things in as safe a way as possible for them. We were, I was able to write a proposal through Promising Futures and was granted an $8,000 grant from them, and so we're using that to help connect families with various cultural activities and resources. One of our first purchases has been the book, We Are Water Protectors, and I don't know if you've seen, but the illustrator Michaela Godd was just the first Native American to receive the Caldecott Honor for her illustrations in the picture book. So we were able to provide a copy for every one of our Native American families and also for every one of our classroom teachers, and our library, of course, as well. So, that's a little bit about what we do. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
So now you know when other NAC coordinators are talking to Anna, they're kind of, okay, this is the gold standard.
At Hawthorne, what is our percentage of Native American students at Hawthorne?
Just K-5, and you were saying 1/3? Yeah. Something that you had also mentioned was that, you know, the NAC coordinator position changing, not changing, but I think they're feeling like they can add more things, so we are starting to see a little bit more with art clubs or social clubs. I don't know, did you mention your sewing club? Your sewing club? So now moving on to the eight middle school and high school Native American connections and Lakota teachers. Their focus is to engage their students so that they feel connected to the school, so that they feel like they belong, and that they're part of the Sioux Falls School District education system, which we know is so very important for our students. The NAC teachers help students meet their goals of graduating from high school and planning for the future and dreaming about the future, what goes beyond that. They do this through academic instruction, but they also do this through case management time. So, all of our NAC coordinators, Lakota teachers, besides teaching in the classroom, they also have case management time where they try to meet with every single one of their students who's in the building. Lakota teachers offer classes at all three high schools. Next year, we are planning on all four high schools offering Lakota language. This helps in two different ways, of course, connecting them to their culture, which is so very important, but then also opening up the possibility for that college path. By, by the time they're done, they would have two years of Lakota language that they could use towards. Liaisons, of which we have two now this year, two full-time liaisons, work to assist families tearing down those barriers that keep their students from attending school. This could be finding the resources for transportation, food, and clothing. They go to conferences to help parents navigate that process and to feel welcome. They help enroll students into school, and with the Title VI and the JOM forms. They work with social workers and administrators to help alleviate attendance issues, and outside of pandemic times, they make home visits, bringing students either to school or bringing forms for parents to sign, or just being that encouraging person to say, come into the building. And in fact, before this meeting, we were talking about that, about how do we, how do we present options for our families to feel a part of the building, their individual building, for their students. And I'd also like to talk about office worker, because this is the only person I'll probably mention by name, is Charlotte West. Everyone kind of smiles, but she has been in this position for a while. She probably doesn't like me saying it, but she is our historian. She knows what's been going on for years. She's also our glue and our eyes and our ears, and so she is also a part of this. Also a part of more so the budget, because social workers do this for all of our students, but social workers also are a part of our Office of Indian Education. Our budget has three sources. The first we, the first two, actually, we've already mentioned, the Johnson-O'Malley program. This is, usually does hover around that $13,000 mark, maybe a little bit less. I think 13,500 is the most that we've ever gotten. This is a program for students must be enrolled members of a federally recognized tribe, band, or organized group. A copy of their blood degree must be filed with the Office of Indian Education, and this money goes primarily for transportation costs. There's a little bit that we may put into supplies, but it, whatever we get, we put immediately to transportation, and as you can about imagine, that, that runs out pretty fast. Oh, just a little bit more. The second source is the Title VI Indian Education Grant. This is written quarterly. It's gradually increased over the years. To be quite honest, it's a fun part of my job, not writing the grant. Dr. Knowles will know that I don't love writing grants. But I love the part of the grant where I get to interact with our Indian Education Parent Committee, and they are, they are so very important, in fact, needed for this grant. For this grant, students must be enrolled or have a parent, grandparent enrolled in a federally recognized tribe, band, or organized group, and students must have a signed Title VI Eligibility Certification Form on file in our office. And so lots of times when you may hear us talking about getting in forms, that's exactly what we're doing. Everyone is working to get in those forms so that when we go for this grant, we have that to help us out. This committee, this, I'm sorry, this budget does need, this grant does need to make sure that we are working with our Indian Education Parent Committee, and actually today, we're able to talk Shar Green, who is the president of our committee, to stop by, so we very much appreciate that. To tell you a little bit about the committee, it has input into everything that we do, from planning and budget and vice on curriculum. This committee has both adult and youth representation. We meet quarterly to hear updates from teachers and to share ideas. The committee assists with open houses in August. They help with the holiday party, or put on the holiday party. This year, I'm not sure what we called it. Was it called like the holiday drive? Drive-through? We had it at Hawthorne in the Circle Drive there, where they could come up, and it was our parents who actually had the gifts and had the hot cocoa and the coffee for families when they went by. The committee also helps with the honoring ceremony at the end of the year for our Indian graduates. So I don't know, Shar, if you would like to say a few words too?
Yeah.
Just to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name's Shar Green. So I've been on the Parent Committee for, I think, four or five years now, and just recently got voted to be president this year. So, one of our initiatives was really to really vamp up the parents. We know that parents are a huge part of, of our students being successful in the school district. And I have a daughter who's 13. She goes to George McGovern, and then I have twins at Hawthorne Elementary School in kindergarten. And so, you know, I've, I've always been a huge advocate for my kids, and part of my goal in, in this parent committee is to really boost other parents up and be a part of it. Because I think they all have wonderful, unique ideas, and a lot of times their voices are silenced, or they're, they're very intimidated by this schools, you know? I think it's really common for that for all parents, but especially Native parents. And just to go back a little history, I guess, from, on me, I, I'm the chair of the Native American Day Parade here in Sioux Falls, and this would have been our third year, this last year, but we did a video instead, and kind of some places that because of COVID. And I'm also, I serve as a board member for South Dakota Urban Indian House, and so I try to be involved in as many community collaborations as I can be, because I think that's like an integral part in building our youth and our, our Native parents up in Sioux Falls. Yeah, and really, our vision is just to continue to support the students in the Sioux Falls School District. We know there's such a need for it. There's so many parts, and it's really a holistic approach, so many, so many different things that are so important. And we're just really trying to boost that up and be a support in any way that we possibly can be, whether that's getting parents together. So we kind of revamped that. I know when I was a student in the Sioux Falls School District, there used to be like dinners, and I think Indian Ed hosted those dinners, and there was awards and things like that, and I don't know at what point those, that went away, but it did. And so, the last And so the last three years, the first year with 100% parents getting that funding, I think we raised $3,000. Vera Sanford and another organization came together and gave us money to host the dinner. And so it was catered in and we had a great turnout. I think a couple hundred total people paying to that each year. And then this last year, obviously, looked a little different. But we know that that parent interaction is so important. And to have those informal conversations with parents to make them feel included and they're students, just academics, and you do that through kind of those informal kind of events. So that's our focus. We're willing to dive in anywhere that the school district needs us to go into. Because a lot of us that are in the parent committee know it's a long road ahead of us still. And we want to be that support for the school district.
Thank you, Shar, and I appreciate you taking off time from work today to be here. We, we had a little bit of a joke going, and I haven't been in this position very long. We had a little bit of a joke, we have tried to plan out something for parents in the spring of the year. And it, 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 snowstorms have prevented a couple of years of that, or one year of that. And then last year, we were joking going, oh, it surely won't happen another time. Well, then who knew that we'd have a pandemic? So we're already discussing that this spring, we're not planning anything so that we won't have anything else horrible happen. But we'll plan something that where we're not traveling. A part of the Indian Education Grant, what that does pay for, just so you know, is that that is kind of the bulk of what we pay for our teachers. Both at the middle and high school level, the Lakota teachers administrative pay comes out of this and we pay for one full-time liaison. We also have supporting curriculum for the Ochete Shakaui Essential Standards. That's embedded across all of our curriculum, elementary, middle school and high school. That we, that comes out of this program too. The other thing that, well, I'm going to keep going because there's lots of good things that are happening here. But it also helps us with training of our staff. And example of that is that this spring, 2012, I wonder if I. Oh, you know what? I did, I put it on the back once, I'm going to go back. So now we're going to talk about the third source, actually, is our, the Indian Education District Funds and what that does pay for. So I'm sorry, this is the one that actually pays for the NAC Lakota Teachers Administrative Staff Liaison. And gives us that extra boost to make sure that we are embedding that curriculum and those supports for that curriculum. The exciting part is some of the trainings that we have had. And this year in the spring of 2021, Anna Brokenleg right here is actually going to take our whole group through the reclaiming youth training. I should let you talk about this, but I'm going to kind of put it in a nutshell. Please tell me if there's more to it. But it is going to end up equalling, I think, about 12 hours of training. Is that right? Yep. Yep, 12, 16 hours focused on reclaiming traditions by embracing the values of belonging, mastery, independence and generosity, circle of courage. We're pretty excited about this and I know that not just our NAC facilitators at the elementary level, who are always asking us for more, that our middle school and high school are, actually have decided that they're going to take two full days at the end of the school year after school is out to go through the training. This budget also helps with helping students on field trips or being able to request other monies for field trips that connect them to their history and their, their history to the present culture and just making them proud of who they are. A great example of this were high school students last year that attended Lakota Nation Invitational. It was pretty exciting for me, I got to go. Washington High School student Grace Sitting Bull won the Algebra I competition there. Okay, I would just agree with winning a math competition, but he actually took the Algebra I competition. And Johnny Nor took top honors in the art show from Washington High School. Just tremendous, the artwork that was there, as you can about imagine, just hundreds and hundreds of pieces in who took top honors. The Roosevelt students, they were very excited to be able to participate in the first hand games competition. It took me about four hours to figure out what they were doing. And then after that, I was pretty excited and thinking, I can do this. And then I noticed that on the side, there were other competitions going on. And it was not Native American families or students that were doing it. It was school board members that were doing the hand game competitions from Rapid City. It was businesses, it was firemen and women that were coming in. So I'm just saying that if we ever get Anna and I on this side of the state, we're challenging you to be in the hand games. Yeah, very, very exciting. It also helps with taking students for college visits. And so as an example, going to USD and SDSU to help students see what their future could be and plan for that. Middle school trips that we try to take with each one of the grades, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Examples of that would be going to Pipestone or to Good Earth at Blood Run, where students are able to experience their history. So why did I come today? What was the whole point of this? It was to educate you, our school board members and any community members that happen to be here or listening to this, to find out what the Office of the Indian Education Program does do for the Sioux Falls School District. As we look to the district priorities, those focus on positive outcomes and the well-being of our students. Our Native American families and students want to be a part of the discussion and the planning. We will continue to grow our community partnerships, such as working with colleges like the University of North Dakota and their internship program, hoping to attract Lakota teachers to our district. We will continue to work with groups such as the Language Conservancy. That will help us this year to do a study on the connection of native language, curriculum and the mental well-being of former students. So looking at our past graduates and how they are doing and how that connection, what, that we were able to help them in the school district, how that has propelled them forward. We also look for new partnerships or programming that may help us to increase graduation rates among our students. One example of this, and there are many examples of programs that we, that we want to take a look at, but one example would be that of the JAG program that could help with career development, job attainment and leadership skills. So to take a look and see what that looks like here in the Midwest, the schools that have implemented that and would that make sense in our own district, knowing what other programming that we do have for our Native American students and all students. And with the opening of two new buildings, we will look for more opportunities to bring our students and families together, increasing family involvement to make this an ever-growing district welcoming to our Native American students. So at this time, if you have any questions for us, we'll try to answer them or we can say we don't know and get back to you.
Thank you for that information. I think it's so helpful and it's very timely with what's been going on in peer with the legislature with some of the bills that have been introduced to show what we are currently doing as a district. And is there room for improvement? Of course there is. We know with our graduation rates specifically, we need to look at new strategies as we are updating our strategic plan. But I do agree, we need to include families and, and them so that we know what things will work. And this JAG program, as you mentioned, I know Wagner has seen huge success in their community with graduation rate increases. So I would love to spend some time and talk to families and see, you know, if that's something that they think might help with our district. And if it's not that, what is it? What can we do to improve that needle? And I think relationship building is the biggest thing that we need to continue to work on and, and do that. I know at Washington, I'm sure you did that tremendously, Patty, as a counselor and so forth there. And that's just something we need to always be mindful of with working with our Native Americans because I think we owe it to them to do a better job in getting those graduation rates.
Yep, absolutely. I know sometimes I look at this and it looks so good, but you do look at where we want to go and there is a lot of room to improve. Yep, absolutely. And, and to keep that focus on our families and our students.
I'd love to see that and hear about the different activities that you're doing with the Native American students to kind of increase that inclusion and, and belonging. And I'm, I'm wondering, do we have any activities in place that we try to bring non-Native American students to an understanding? So I think that sometimes is where the challenges lie in not understanding why things are done a certain way or set a certain way. And I think it takes an understanding on both parts to really build that respect. And so I'm just curious if you have any comments or any, anything that you could share about that side of it.
Yeah, so the integration of the Ochete Shakaui Essential Understandings into the curriculum in the Sioux Falls School District is for all students. And so that's where we really get to the point where we want all of our students. And I mean, this is, this is legislation that was written at the state level. There is a requirement for us as a district to make sure that students are being taught the history and culture of the Ochete Shakaui people in their K-12 education. And so that has started in a number of different ways. We began with addressing actually some problem areas that the district was having surrounding Native Americans Day and Thanksgiving. A lot of lessons were still perpetuating a lot of the myths around Thanksgiving. Things were not as research-based and things as we wanted them to be. And as a result, we were having a lot of negative interactions and feedback from a lot of our Native American families. And so we started there and addressed those two issues at the elementary level and created research-based lessons that were both respectful and relevant that all K-5 teachers would have access to, to use with their students. And so we started there. Then as the Ochete Shakaui Essential Understandings came out, we started to disseminate that information to teachers, both in some trainings and then also through our social studies curriculum. So when we did our new social studies adoption last year, we tried to place the standards that aligned well with social studies standards within their appropriate areas and places. So those are actually within, embedded within the social studies curriculum now. I do think that we could continue to do work to embed those things also into other curriculum areas. They don't only belong in social studies. They can also be incorporated into math, into art, into pretty much every other content area as well. And so that would be a long-term goal. The, the state and the committee that's been working on the Ochete Shakaui Essential Understandings, this year is starting to roll out more lessons and teacher tools through the WO Lakota Project and partnership with the South Dakota Public Broadcasting. And so we're hoping to be able to share all of that information weekly with all K-5 teachers. And then through instructional coaches, disseminating that information through social studies teachers. Although I know that middle school and high school NAC teachers have discussed and really would like to get it to all of our teaching staff because they really all need that background knowledge. And it's just beneficial for everybody to have. So those are some of those curriculum pieces that we've been working on. As far as the different activities, things that we're hoping to work on at Hawthorne in particular through our grant for Promising Futures, are Lakota language classes for families that families could come to together with their kids in order to start some basic Lakota language if they have it. If we have families that are already experts, we would love to have them come help and be able to coach and practice. Other families that are learning and honing their skills with that. Language revitalization is a huge push for, I think, many indigenous communities right now. And so we're hoping to incorporate that. We're hoping to incorporate some other various cultural activities, things like the sewing club that we started last year, but also with families. Finding non-threatening ways to get families through our doors and help create connections with our school system. Native American communities are still dealing with the history of boarding schools and the trauma that is created with education for Native families is ongoing and intergenerational. And so there's a lot of things that we have to combat in order to create positive, healthy relationships with our Native American families again and create that, recreate that trust with the educational system.
Thank you very much. Lots of, I mean, lots of good activities. And I think you're so right when you talk about starting with the family. You know, it doesn't matter who the kid is, a strong family is going to create a strong student. And so I think that there's a lot of learning that can be done by everybody. And like you said, building trust and those relationships are really going to go the longest, you know, and have the biggest impact to those students. So thank you both, all three of you for, for your work on, obviously with the students, but also kind of sharing with us some of your successes. And I'd love to hear kind of your brainstorming and your, your ideas for long-term. So I think that's super important. It's not just to think about what can we do this year, but where do we want to be in five years? And how do we want that to look? And knowing that unfortunately, some of our current high school students may not benefit from that, but long-term, it will build for longer, you know, better relationships and stronger students and more success for them. So thank you very much.
I have a curiosity question that you've kind of answered along the way. But wanting to maintain language preservation and knowing that there's a lot of oral tradition involved in that. You mentioned the program at North Dakota. What are some of the best programs available right now for really teaching the language well that we should be thinking about in order to continue to have that capacity in our own district? Just knowing with many languages, that's getting more and more difficult as we move through generations. How can we help with building that good, strong pipeline for people who can continue to teach our children?
Well, you know, I think Anna just made a good point that, you know, even looking at programming, that's teaching the families, teaching the parents, they're not just our students, we're teaching that. I'm not sure if this is exactly what you're talking about, the programs that, you know, we've worked with the universities here in South Dakota. And they certainly are helpful, we're trying to build that more so because they just don't have the numbers is what we're understanding. I don't know if either one of you wanted to add more into like the programming itself or?
Does Rapid City has Lakota immersion school? Are they working with the Pine Ridge Immersion Zone? Is that who they're working with?
I think that is correct, right? Right, yep. And we have talked about, you know, there, there are, and I'll let you talk more to this too. Standing Rock, I believe, has some immersion programs that, there's a wonderful documentary out there, if you haven't seen it, about actually early childhood, starting with that. And some of the elders going in there and having these immersion centers for students and starting them off young, you know, and how very, very important that is. Those are the ones that I'm aware of. Do you guys know any other?
Pine Ridge also has immersion school. It's an all-girls school. I think they're like three or four years in to their curriculum now, but I can't think of the actual official name, do you know? Yeah, they, they do wonderful things in Pine Ridge too, at that immersion school.
Just kind of generally speaking, I think that we have a lot of education materials coming out from the Lakota Language Consortium, which is where a lot of our teachers have been trained and where they're getting a lot of their educational resources from currently. Our best teachers are always our elders and our fluent speakers. And so a lot of our fluent speakers do reside on a lot of our reservations here in South Dakota. And so looking at a lot of those tribal colleges and things and the programs that they have to help train teachers for their immersion programs.
I know USD, they're revamping their Native program there. And so Dr. Elise Foxer would be a good contact.
It's just really striking what a rich and significant and important culture and history that you bring to our state and region. We are so lucky to tap into that and the impact that it has on all of our students in the district. You're doing important work and it's appreciated.
Should we just move on to the agenda?
Thank you so much and please keep in contact and keep working on this. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We will move on to committee assignment reports. I'll start with Kate.
Policy, we have, I think, four policies coming in before us on Monday. They're all review revised. I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me, but they were very, either no changes or very minimal changes. So nothing significant there to be concerned with, I don't think. I am blanking. Calendar. Calendar Committee, we are actually going to be meeting again on Monday, possibly looking at a few revisions for not next school year, but the follow-up. So we'll be talking through those on Monday. And SELC, can you handle that? Because I had to, I had to cut out early on that one. And that's it. Thank you.
For sharing mics.
Insurance, I'll let Neam talk about it, wasn't able to attend that one. Workforce and talent. We had a meeting and kind of the next steps for what they're looking at is sending a survey out to some people in the community regarding workforce needs, just trying to see where is it that we need people, whether that we need workers. And so is it entry-level jobs or is it execs? Is it, who is it that we need? And then how can we kind of tweak some of those things that we're doing in our workforce and in our community? How do they recruit? So just trying to gather some information on those things. There are, working on some Future STEM summer camps this summer for middle school students that sound really cool, that the focus is on the city and Sioux Falls. And so how can they get, you know, park and rec people and transportation services and banking and infrastructure and construction and helping that middle school age group see themselves working in our community? And so again, trying to retain those students and stay here by showing them how they can apply their knowledge and their education and their skills right here in our own community. And then they're working on some different career connection pathways to try to guide students, very similar to a lot of the stuff that we're trying to do as a district too to say, if this is what your interest is, here are some things that you might consider. So lots of good conversations, and we meet again this Friday, so. There have been conversations, and I think some of that's still unknown at this time, but definitely they're keeping a pulse on what that, what they might need as far as level of skill and what kind of training might they need. And I think that's part of that survey too, is just to see that's going to be a huge change. And so it's going to impact a lot of other industries as well when you look at the rate of pay and other similar paying jobs. And is that going to pull from healthcare? Is it going to pull from, you know, other places that will be fighting for that same purpose of people? So haven't had like definitive conversations, but it's definitely come up on what if or how it's not going to work. Yep. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, I have four committee reports. Insurance, Education Foundation, Budget, Sports Authority. And then just to note that I'm working with STC on their accreditation process, specifically Board Governance. So to the Insurance Committee, just three things to really note there. Medical Plan is running favorably at 83% of the budget or approximately 2.9 million under budget. This comes after a favorable last year, the 2019-2020 Plan Year, in which the Medical Plan finished at 87% of the budget or approximately 5.3 million under budget. Our Wellness Program, we had a follow-up. Our committee voted to recommend IBH as the wellness vendor to the school board. IBH just, it had the, the most favorable price of all the proposals, and we feel really confident in their ability to carry, carry the goals of the district board. The third thing is the Grand Rounds. We had some follow-up there. We're looking to renew that contract. There were no cost increase. And let's see, I mean, that's, and there were some other details to that, but overall it was just favorably recommended to the committee. Education Foundation. Our 2020 fundraising goal was surpassed. The goal was that to raise $2,018, or $218,000. The foundation raised 2,000, yeah, 255,000. In addition to 160,000 was added to our downwind, which brings that at 415,000. Second thing, the public schools grants, the first-time teacher grants, the Student Success Fund, supported a total of 35 sites. The goal of the foundation is to impact each school, so they continue to trend favorably in that direction. This Thursday closes out the public school grant, or Public School Proud Grant application deadline. To date, we have 45 grants from 25 schools. The grants range from $180 up to around $10,000. Last, the foundation gave 100 pairs of boots in partnership with Stride Right to redeem $50 vouchers at Stride Right. Budget Committee. We approved the COVID, at the committee level, we approved the COVID budget, which was presented to all of us at the last board meeting by Todd. The South Dakota Sports Authority, we approved the 2019 Audit Report. Nothing material to report there. The Summit League Basketball will be March 6th through the 9th, and the Sioux Falls Marathon is scheduled for August 29th of this year. That's it.
Good afternoon. The past committee met on the 14th. It was a lively conversation about some areas that might need to have some more observation for stop signs out by the Veterans Parkway. What's the school they're going to put the rubber cones up? You were with me there, weren't you? Rosa Parks, there were too many kids getting close clips, so nobody got hit, but it was scaring some people, so they're looking at putting some rubber cones up. And then looking at putting cameras in the buses inside and out. For the, good news, the Accessible Housing realized no one could meet on the day that I was unable to meet, and so they missed a meeting. And we're changing it to the third Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning, and Calendar Committee, we're meeting on Monday. That is all. Thank you.
You have a great voice, Todd. Thank you. SELC, we're continuing to work on accessible housing, working with various partners, including Todd's committee, and so to hopefully tie in with what's going to happen with Amazon and so forth to, we already have an issue with accessible housing, and how can we make sure we can make it better as well as not make it worse with the addition of more companies coming to Sioux Falls. Chamber's been focusing on the legislative session and so forth. Southeast Tech had their, we had our tech council meeting. We'll get it reported in the board meeting, so I won't spend time on it here. Teacher of the Year, we meet next week to narrow, narrow down the candidates. Early Childhood Head Start, talk a little bit about summer programming and so forth. Kate's actually going to take over my spot on that, and then you'll see it on the consent agenda for next month, or next meeting on Monday. March, we, is Equalization Month, so you all get an email to see what dates any of you could do to serve on that. We have a DEDU that. So just let them know what works in your calendar, please. Budget is covered. And then Legislative, I'm just going to update, Senate Bill 68 has been revived, so you might be getting some updates on that. And Senate Bill 177, you'll probably be eating some information on that so that we can communicate with our legislators on that issue as well. So, yes.
I do have one more. I forgot to add that the foundation is working with the district on the 150th celebration and sort of what that looks like. So more to come. That will be a fun celebratory time, given the past school year and COVID.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the board? Singman, you have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournments, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
We are adjourned.